I'd like to call this Tuesday, June 24th, Town Council Workshop to order. First item of discussion is the Marketing Advisory Committee Budget Presentation. Mr. Hogan? Think you've done this before, haven't you?
It's an awful lot of money, Mr. Ho- oh, wait, I'll let you start.
I already knew you were coming at me.
Oh, God, oh, I got a present for you, so. So, do I state my name and all that stuff for like P and Z?
You're good.
Okay. How are y'all doing today? So, obviously, you've all had the chance to look at the budget. The biggest things that are the real changes in the budget is we're increasing our PR and social media quite a bit. The thing that I really like is on the agency fees, they went up a lot, but it's because we're taking the commission out of the advertising dollars, so we actually know what we're actually spending. Because when we were spending before, we don't know what with the commission-based, we didn't really know exactly how much advertising we're getting, so now we know exactly what the commissions are based on the agency fee, and then it's taking it out so that every dollar that we see spending from this point forward, we're actually spending now. So that makes it, in my opinion, a lot better. We obviously investing a lot more money into research platforms. The stuff, Mr. Healy has been in these meetings, and the stuff that they can tell us about, the first time a customer clicks on Carolina Beach, to how long they were here, how much they spent, little big brothers for me, but it seems to be working because we keep bringing in more and more money. So the total budget is $1,345,675, which is $78,473 less than last year. And I know the one question that everybody's going to ask, so I have that email. Our rollover funds that we still have in arrears for emergency situation is $854,000. She, Megan, do y'all all know Megan?
I know Megan.
Megan is the new Sean Braden, so Sean came-
Can we introduce Megan, just for those that don't know?
If you want to come up and say a little something about yourself, that'd be great.
So all, so Megan, if you guys remember Sean, he was here for many, many years. She retired, and Megan's the replacement.
Yeah, I'm Megan Buckbinder. I'm the new Executive Vice President of Marketing and Strategy for the Wilmington and Beaches CBB, which is the longest title of all time. But I've been here for about three and a half months. I came from Springfield, Missouri, most recently, but I am a Carolina girl. I'm from right outside of Charlotte. I'm really excited for the opportunity to come with some fresh eyes, check a little bit about what we've been doing. And so Jeff mentioned a little bit of how we're reorganizing some things and bringing some clarity to the budget, but happy to answer any questions.
Right out of, right outside of Charlotte, where?
Yeah, in the Lake Norman area, Huntersville.
Oh, okay, I'm from Mount Pleasant.
Oh, great, yeah.
So I've got an interesting tidbit about Megan.
Uh-oh.
Her husband was a broadcaster in the St. Louis Cardinal organization.
Yes, he was the broadcaster for the Springfield Cardinals, the double-A team.
How awesome.
I know. He's having a little bit of FOMO being here and there. He's having a career shift, maybe a little identity crisis, but we're super happy to be back here, and raising our kids, having them by the coast is kind of a dream, so.
And by the way, she runs a really good meeting.
Oh, thank you.
It's very on point and-
Do my best.
All questions are answered immediately, so that's great.
Well, welcome, Megan.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
So, yes, Mr. Hoff, last time? I know you're going to ask me why are we spending this much money?
Well, it's not your fault, Jeff.
I did not write it in the TDA, so.
This came up in our budget retreat, and we were talking to all our local representatives, and I think every one of us agreed that this is a bit much, but it needs a state legislative change, am I saying this right? To change the formula of how we spend ROT. So it's not you, I get it, you're doing, you're doing your job.
Yes, sir.
So we've got no beef with you. The rollover funds, has that been added to, or is that just something that's just sitting?
Well, about three years ago, the TDA sort of informed Carolina Beach and the CBB that they are not a savings account, that they kind of, they kind of said, you're capping it here. And so we have not been, the rollover funds, I think, are still going in there, so it does still go up a little bit every year, but, but they basically have told us that they're not a savings account.
Right.
And that that's not the purpose of having ROT.
They're saying, spend the money.
They're saying, they're saying you have enough money to be able to form a really good campaign if you have a storm and need to let people know that you're opening back up. You have a million, almost a million dollars, that's enough money to have a really good, strong campaign, and, and the purpose of ROT is to spend it. The only thing I will say about ROT is I've been on this committee a long time, and when I started, we were literally trying to figure out how to, we had $250,000, I think, when I started, and now we have $1,300,000 to spend, so whether we like that we're spending it or not, it obviously is working, because we're bringing in more and more revenue every single year. So, I think it's, I think it's a double-edged sword, like, would I rather see it in sand?
Yeah, I think-
Some years, yes, like, the way it's cliffed off now, yes, I'd love to see it in sand, but we got to have people keep coming so that we keep collecting, and the way to keep people coming is let them know, because, I mean, you know, you have TV at your house like I do, and I see commercials for Outer Banks and Myrtle Beach and the Alabama Golf Trail, and so, I mean, people are trying to come after our customers, and it's important that we keep letting them know that we're here and, you know, come up with fresh new ads and spend the money, in my opinion.
Yeah, and on Mike's question, ever since I've been involved, it comes up all the time, the county commissioners get involved. Everybody gets involved in the way ROT is split, because everybody wants it split a different way, depending on what their bias is. But every county has, that collects ROT, has their own, there is no general legislative structure for the state. Where that money goes by district by district can be completely and wildly different. So they have these local bills for each municipality on how they collect ROT, and it just doesn't get a lot of traction, Mike, to change it. And, and, this is my opinion, I think a lot of it has to do with no one wants to open that up, because once you start the debate in Raleigh about collecting ROT, where's that debate go?
Yeah, well-
I know, I know personally, when, when Shutterworth was on here, Mr. Hoff, he, he hated it, and he tried and tried and talked and talked, and he walked the walk and tried to talk to the TDA, to everybody, and he literally got nowhere.
But I do think that Councilman, former Councilman Shutterworth was able to get some sand, more money put into the sand fund.
Yeah.
That was one that he did accomplish.
Maybe a little change.
But also, it would take all four municipalities in New Henry County and the county to agree to take it to legislation to change it, and that's where you get people who want to drag their feet, because some people like the way it's done.
No, I get it. Look, it's ultimately a local decision, even though it takes legislative authority. If our local legislators take it to-
The Senate.
To the Senate and the House, you know, a House member from Asheville's not going to block what our local people want, most likely, but it's a-
I just think, the simple reason to do it is because you're at risk with the feds. Feds do not commit funds, but for one project at a time, so to forecast the next renourishment assumes that a 50% or more, because I think the core is moving to a two-thirds fed, one-third, at least that was planned recently. So if it's 50, or 50% or 67% of the whole project cost for CB and KB coming from the feds, and you got a fiscal environment that doesn't lend itself to those kind of projects, you got to be able to have enough in reserves.
So I think Lynn had a good point earlier when he said, you know, basically be careful for what you wish for. I mean, if you take it to the next level, I mean, they, they could say, hell, this is, this whole thing is bogus. I mean, why, why? And there's always a fear of having it taken away, to some degree.
Yeah, it's interesting, if you go research what counties spend it on, it's wildly different. Like, you, it's, I mean, some places it supports their convention center, some places it supports parks, some places it supports, they, they use it for all kinds of different-
Asheville doesn't use it for sand?
No, they don't. They got plenty though recently.
Yeah, they've got.
Well, you say they're not a checking account, but on that note, what does, how do they manage that 854,000? And I understand if you don't have this answer, Jeff, but that's a worthy question to ask. Like, that's a lot of money. I hope it's not sitting there at .1% interest.
It's probably getting 0% interest if I had to bet.
The county manages it, so.
They'll, they'll earn interest like we do under-
So I don't know what the county does with their reserve funds, but the county manages it.
All right, anything else, Jeff?
No, sir.
Any other questions for Jeff?
No, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great day. I'm going to make, go make ice cream.
Okay, next up is review of town committees. Ed, is that you?
All right.
Does that say 33 June?
That did. I don't know where, that's, that's today, you didn't know? They said 33rd of-
33rd? It's May 33rd.
So, it was 2021 where we, we made a concerted effort to go back and try to clean up our processes. We adopted a new ordinance for citizens advisory committees. We talked about reporting requirements, streamlined the ordinance. We brought council in, we did training, we brought the committees in and did multiple trainings. I did a part, and I think Noel did a part, we might have had somebody else helping with doing that training. It got a lot of attention. I ended up doing some trainings with the School of Government for other municipalities, and, because this is not a Carolina Beach issue, this is definitely, happens all over the state, probably all over the country, where, where everybody's trying to find the right mix on how to manage their standing committees. And 2025, a few years later, we, we've made a lot of great improvements, but there's still a couple of things we're hoping to work out. Y'all thought a little bit about this at your budget retreat back in February, about making sure that we keep committees in line with council vision, and that, you know, we go through a budget process, and then want to make sure how do we keep the, the, any funding activities in line with the budget and how we do budget amendments or budget process. So, some options that we looked at is, we've talked about, hey, maybe that we combine some committees, we could dissolve some that aren't historically receiving tasking, changing the status from some of them to, from standing to ad hoc, so they can be utilized when task is given from town council, and then we've had, we've had a lot of luck with the ad hoc committees. And then we had a lot of luck here recently with transition to nonprofits, has been a recent thing that's really been positive, that I don't think, I didn't see coming, but it really worked well. So the ones that we have now are, we have the operations advisory, the police advocacy, Bike Ped, Parks and Rec, and beautification. We obviously have a few others, but they're, they're the ones that we have that are required by statute and do a standing function. So the discussion that I just wanted to set y'all up for, because this is y'all's workshop and discussion, but review options, do we want to look at those options with the standing committees, ad hoc, nonprofit, dissolved, combined, those types of activities? Maybe you have some other ideas. Meeting advertisements is, is one thing that we wanted to emphasize right now with our standing committees. We do an advertisement at the beginning of the fiscal year, so all the, the meetings are advertised, they, and I put a little Q and A, question and answer thing at your place, along with, Kim helped me print out your current ordinance, it gives you some, some questions that people typically ask about committees, and, and we put that up there just, just to spark your memory on where we, where we've come from, where we are now on committees and how they operate. But yeah, that, that's a big thing, so if we change committees, we don't want it to become overly arduous. One of the things in that form is, is they do have to be advertised, so we want to make it somewhat consistent with how we do that. And then how do ideas get to council? Right now, the, the committee liaison is supposed to be reporting, that's kind of where, you know, some of them come, some of them don't. You have town council liaison too, there's different ways that that can happen, but worth some discussion, and how will tasking be, be given to committees? So, right now, they're, they're kind of coming to y'all, and then if, if staff or council has ideas, then we go back to the committees, but, but it's, you know, sometimes that's far in between, or there's, there's a lull periods there, so how to address those lull periods where, you know, the committees aren't being given tasking, and making sure they're not going this way when we're really wanting to go this way. And Mayor, I just want to give you a brief overview to introduce and try to help with, facilitate y'all's discussion.
So, I, maybe you can kick it off. This is my observation, not about any particular committee, not even the current committees we have, but just over the history. I've said all along, the issue is not the committee, it's council and us giving direction to committees. And when you create a standing committee, the committee seems to, some committees will get a life of their own, and then depending on who, and then council changes, right? I mean, there's changes every two years on council, or opportunity for changes. So for me, I'm more about buttoning up, giving, giving, to make sure council is provide, per the ordinance, council's supposed to assign them things to work on. It's not supposed to come the other direction. So that's what led, I think, was it the workshop where, the offsite we had, where we started talking about, you know, maybe at, going more ad hoc? And then, when you want to have a meeting, the way I took that is, when you want to have a meeting, then the council liaison would say, hey, you know, like, I'll just use Deb as an example. So Deb may come in and say, hey, the bike rodeo's coming up, it's going to take us about three months to prepare for that, so I'd like for, you know, to say if we may please advocacy an ad hoc committee. Deb would come in and say, okay, we're going to meet, you know, the next three months to prepare for the bike rodeo. Everybody consensus of council? Yep, we, we agree, that's a good thing for them to be working on. Then Kim can advertise those meetings, and then you have the meetings. If month four, Deb hasn't come back and asked for anything, then there's not a meeting.
Right.
I mean, I, I'm not trying, that's not my, I think that's what we had talked about. I'm just trying to see, I'm just trying to get the discussion started.
Mayor-
But that will ensure council's directive, right, to what we're supposed to be working on.
I think the notes that I had, and then meeting with the Chairman of the OAC, Gerard, are in line, and that is moving to a hybrid, a standing ad hoc committee that meets in defined times barring a project assigned from council, a specific discreet project that would have a known beginning and end, you know? Study the cause of runoff of petroleum on Pica Street. When would they be? Elections June 30th, July, you'd elect your officers in a meeting, right? And then I'd say February post-budget retreat, priorities of council assigned, perhaps then a project from the two-day retreat. Something comes out of that to activate the committee, whether it does or doesn't. If it doesn't, then you move to April, additional input to the budget in its build at that time, and then a determination of which committee members up for election wish to remain. So those three would be my recommendation, those three would be the months where a standing ad hoc would meet. And the benefit to that, I, I think, is you're going to need to have elections for an ad hoc if you don't have one already, as was the case with the Canal Drive Flood Committee. In this case, you have people who still wish to participate, right? In a scaled-down like OAC, there's no project to give them, and I'm not going to go rummaging in the Ops and Mark's workspaces or Brian's, just give them something to do, say, keep coming. That's a waste of time. But, but you still have a body of expertise at the ready, so that's how I would throw it out.
One quick question. Kim, can you tell us, whatever we come up with, there will have to be some communication with you to advertise these meetings? What's involved? I mean, how much time do you need? What does that look like? Right? Is it like, if we had council meeting on, or let's say we did this in, in workshops, we just said, we're going to talk about committee assignments or tasks in workshops, just to keep it clean. So if you want your committee to do something, you come to a workshop. Is that enough time for you to announce, as long as you get a couple of weeks or something? I mean, what?
A week's 48 hours, but a week is a lot better.
Okay, so if we always gave you, let's say, a week's notice that, you know, I'll keep picking on Deb, just because that's the one I started with. Deb says, hey, we're in this workshop, I want my police advisory committee to meet next month, and we, we could keep the same standard times. It's just not, we're not moving the times. And then she says, okay, they're going to be meeting for the next three months? Good. Does that work? Okay. I just didn't want to make sure we didn't back you into something, or it was a fire drill every month.
So nothing really, there's no real structural change when you look at it that way. I mean, like, I've managed two committees, and then I guess particularly at any point at time, if I wanted to say, we're not meeting next month, I could have. And heck, we agreed not to meet, the Bike Ped didn't meet in May, because a couple people were going to be out of town, and, you know, we just made a consensus agreement to just not do it. In fact, we, through the years, don't meet in December, because we, or it's the third Monday of the month, and it always comes right around Christmas, so we've always just stood down on, in December. So that, in a sense, you're really not changing it to ad hoc. It, it's a what's in a name kind of thing. It's still a standing committee.
Yeah, I think the difference is-
Inactive.
Is the direction from council. So what would be different, or at least what's laid out, I'm not trying, it's not Lynn's rule here, but I'm just thinking of how we would implement this would be, the difference would be, sticking with my Deb example, is Deb would come to the, if they, if, the default is you're not meeting, and if you're going to meet, you come to the workshop and you say, hey, Bike Ped's going to be, I mean Bike Ped, Police Advocacy's going to meet for next three months to do the thing. That's the key change, I think, is that consensus of council, that yes, we agree, that's something they should work on.
And they have a directive.
And they have a directive, which is the part in the thing that we are, and like I said, it's not been the committees that's been a problem, it's, it's this body, we never, we're not good at giving direction.
And I think the liaison then, to that point, so I'd like to assemble my committee for this stated purpose.
Exactly, exactly.
Who's running? Who has recently been elected? Who are the officers? What do we see coming down the pike that is germane to operations or to the police?
I will say, though, I still think we're a little bit over-committed right now. I mean, I went and looked at every beach town in North Carolina and made a comparison, and we're above average, clearly.
I agree with you.
And so I do think we still, and, and I'm going to also talk about an ad hoc Freeman Park Committee today, so here, as I tell you that I want to talk about a new one, I think we need to get rid of some old ones or condense this. I think a, a good rule of thumb should be, you got four council members, you should have four committees. You know, I've, I've been liaison on two committees, and I don't want to set the next council member up who replaces me to be burned out the way I burned myself out with this. It's a lot. You know, every committee meeting, it's not just an hour and a half meeting, you bring home homework. You prep for the meetings, you're, you know, putting those folks to work. Maybe that's just me, and I'm too much of an overachiever or something, I don't know, but it, it's a bit of a burnout factor to run two committees.
One per council, first.
Yes, and because, Lynn, I do not think the mayor should have to be-
Oh, I, I have committees.
Yeah.
Off the island committees.
You remember. You sat through a few NPO meetings, huh, Joe?
Ah, TDA.
TDA, WNPO, council government, you know.
I mean, I, my, I have, look, I, you know, I've been on Bike Ped since it was a thing. It's, you know, it's my heart and soul, but I, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't get, it wouldn't break my heart if Bike Ped somehow or another merged with Parks and Rec, and I think operations should just sunset. It's been great, it's been real. I was on the operations committee in 2004, and in 2004, I was on the committee, and I said, oh, okay, sure, I'll do it. What did they do? And the operations director back then in 2004 said, I don't know. That was 21 years ago.
So I think Mike brings up a good question. So are we going to make a decision today on either combining committees, changing them to ad hoc?
This is our only rest of this meeting. We have this whole meeting, so I'm thinking, I, I, I'm not trying to force any decisions, but I'm just trying to say-
Yeah.
We're here to talk about it.
So Mike, Mike brought up combining Parks and Recs with, with Bike Ped, which, to me, it makes sense. If, if that doesn't happen, Parks and Recs will be going to an ad hoc. There's, there's, there's no doubt. So, is there any way to get all the committees up on the?
Can you give us that list again?
Oh, sure.
Take each one and present a case picture.
So, so, before we go to that, can we, does every, it sounds like we're in agreement, I just want to make sure, the only standing committees we should have are the legally mandated ones.
BOA and P and Z.
Is that where we all agree on that? So every-
Those aren't on that list.
No, so BOA, Board of Adjustment-
And P and Z.
P and Z.
And those don't use council liaisons.
And you also have the MAC is separate, I don't think.
Yeah, MAC is separate. MAC is required.
Yeah, the MAC is required because of the-
Actually, but that, you know, Jay is the liaison, so that one probably still, you know, P and Z is managed by Jeremy, and so is Board of Adjustments. You know, it's not somebody else appears role to deal with that. But Jay is dealing with MAC, and is that, that-
Which means quarterly, right?
Not subject to change. Does that only make quarterly?
Yeah, it's usually quarterly.
This goes back to another question. You know, I was surprised how, how valuable the 501(c)(3) worked out for some of these committees, and I, I'm a big fan of it, to be honest with you. I mean, you know, if not, and I know I've talked about this before, they've got to go through the process. If, let's say, beautification, they want money, you know, it's going to take them a year to get that. Where if they were a 501(c)(3), or combined with another committee, I mean, they can, they can, they can raise it.
Well, the perfect, the perfect-
I mean, like, instantly.
Yeah, well, the perfect example is the Centennial Committee, which started as an ad hoc committee for the town. We had all these desires, things we wanted to do, but we couldn't do them because our hands were tied as far as fundraising. So we moved Centennial under the chamber, and it has been marvelous, because it's just, it's worked very well. So I can't speak more highly of the fact of nonprofits. I mean, Friends of the Parks and Greenways, I mean, they do amazing work.
The nonprofits do a good thing, but these are citizen advisory committees, so we, as a council, appoint people to these committees because we want their feedback.
And I think-
To say that the nonprofit fills that role isn't quite accurate, because anybody can be a nonprofit. So I could start a nonprofit tomorrow with me and my buddies, the Pothole Association of Carolina Beach, but that doesn't give us any weight of authority when making a recommendation to the town like an appointed citizen advisory committee would, so it's not the same.
And I think that's a key distinction, right, from the way, is they are citizen advisory committees. Their job should be to advise council not, they're not operational, right? They shouldn't, their job is not to go out and do things in general, their job is to, you know, not to do projects, I mean, not, you know what I mean? Their job is to advise us, so like Bike Ped would go out and look at the emerg, you know, like, one of the things that's coming down for Bike Ped is going to be this whole e-bike thing, depending on where the legislation falls, right? How should we react to that, assuming we get the authority to, you know? So you would have a citizen committee say, okay, guys, you are the, you represent the bikers of the town, and, and you know this issue. Advise council on what- and, and you know this issue. Advise council on what legislation we need to adopt to meet the need, right? That's advising us on, hey, we think we need, I'm making stuff up now, but we need speed limits on the greenway or we need no e-bikes on the greenway or whatever the rules, uh, that they propose. But they're advising us to take a legislative action, right? That seems to be the disconnect is our committees have turned into, um, you know, it goes back to many years ago, that was the only way to really get involved in the town. You didn't have, I mean, things are so great now. You have, you know, you have everything from Island Men, Island Women, uh, Parks and Greenways, the Chamber, um, I know I'm forgetting somebody, but whatever. You've got all these fantastic community involvement organizations now that we didn't have, you know, 30 years ago. So there's lots of ways for us to get involved if you want to be in the doing part.
As I look at the list right now, the only two that I see that are doing are Mike's two committees, Bike Ped and Beautification. They're the only ones with some direction, honestly.
Yeah. So if it's an opportunity.
Maybe that's why Mike's burned out.
That's why Mike's burned out.
Well, if it's an opportunity to take each one individually and make a determination for the future. I would remove Bike and Ped and Parks and Rec and leave them alone. Or combine them if that's a better idea, because clearly they have, uh, a way forward.
Jay, didn't you say Parks and Rec was going under nonprofit?
Yeah, but you know, if, if they combine, if they combine with Bike Ped, I don't know how you feel about it, but I think it makes sense. Parks and Rec, it does make sense.
Actually, I, I would say Parks and Rec and Beautification make more sense than Bike Ped.
Parks are beautiful. Bikes may not be.
I think what we talked about before, though, was, and this is kind of, you know, back at the offsite, I was in the hatchet mode. I wanted to just get rid of a bunch of them. But you guys have convinced me that maybe we need an, we don't really know where that goes. And certainly we have a lot of dedicated citizens. We don't want to tell them we don't appreciate their efforts, certainly. So, because we do, they do a lot of good work. May, maybe the approach rather than figuring out how to combine them or get rid of them today is let's make them ad hoc. Let's go to the meet as directed approach. And then we will see where it goes, right? That would give us a chance to, you know, if a committee really doesn't, if we don't give them any direction for a year, well, there's your answer.
Isn't there a meeting on the schedule generally that will go back and review the committees, the entire rack and stack? And that would be January, I mean, on the, right, at the retreat. Okay. So that'd give you what, six months? Six to seven months?
Well, I'm just throwing that out as, rather than sit here and try to, I mean, somebody, I, I'm agreeable to combining things. If you guys, these are, I don't know, sit on either one of these committees. So you guys come up with what you think and I'll support that. But as a general, I'm more after getting, I just want to make sure we leave here with something where council is directing the activities. That's what I'm more focused on than any particular. Ed, from a staff standpoint, so if we went with this ad hoc approach, would staff, one of the issues we talked about was staff drain, right, of having to attend all these committee meetings. So how would that work? Would then, so if Deb came in and said, hey, I'm going to stick with my bike, my bike rodeo thing. So Deb comes in and says, hey, I need Police Advocacy to meet for the next three months. We're going to be planning for the, uh, bike rodeo and, and then Kim announces it. Then Deb would say, uh, I, I really need a representative from the police department to, you know, to participate in that. Is that, would that also come with a request for staff presence? Is that what you're, is that helpful? As opposed to assigning a staff person is going to be there at every meeting?
I, I think, yes, sir. I think you would, you would look at the manager and say, hey, we're, we're going to activate this, um, you know, uh, council member, like, uh, recommended we activate Police Advocacy for the bike rodeo and we're all, you know, make a vote, we're all in agreement. And Mr. Manager, we, um, we'd like to ensure we have a staff liaison that can work with us on this process.
See, that's flipping the sca, it's flipping the system completely around now where council's directing. It's very clear what we're working on.
Chain of command.
Which is what the ordinance says we're supposed to.
But I do agree with Joe. The July meeting is necessary every year because you have to.
Yeah, I think everybody has to meet July. Every commit, if you're going to have a committee, they all have to meet July. Because that's where you elect officers.
It's also when you put your calendar together for the year. And that way you know where you're headed this year.
Right.
Tentatively, anyway.
Right.
So question, because I'm sure it's going to come up sometime. So let's say we go that approach, the ad hoc approach. Community members have a benefit, which is a parking pass. Does that go away?
It doesn't have to, does it?
I don't see that it has to.
I think right now the rule is it's standing committees only, but I'm not bent one way or the other. I know in the past there have been committees that were converted to standing just so they got their parking passes. And I don't really.
That's, um, yeah, we.
I mean, you're asking citizens to give their time.
I, I'm more than happy to give them a parking pass if they're willing to commit time to the committee.
That's, that's a good point. We, um, actually, I was talking to Debbie yesterday. There's a couple of, we just adopted, council just adopted rates and fees schedule and that's one of those little, uh, rules in there under rates and fees. But there are, there were a couple of things right after we adopted, like, oh yeah, that's, we saw a few errors. We could bring that back if we wanted to.
Okay. I don't, I don't think anyone up here has the intent of, yeah, changing that benefit.
Right.
Right?
Because I brought it up, believe me, I don't want to, I don't want to be the one.
I, I still think it's time to let Ops go. I mean, I, I, we're not doing ourselves any favors if we don't condense in some way. Of course, I'm saying that like as I'm getting ready to talk about Freeman Park, which I think should be an ad hoc in its pure sense, as in we make, we, we, uh, take on a task, we complete the task, and that's the end of it. That's what we often thought of ad hoc as in the past. Like the North End Flood Committee, you know, they, they did their research, they made their recommendation, their presentation, and then it disbanded. And that's how the original Freeman Park, uh, committee was as well.
Yep. They came, I remember it was, they came in and gave their presentation. Because I remember asking them, is this the end? Are you done? They said, yeah, this is.
The Boardwalk Committee was the same.
So if you're doing a pure ad hoc committee, so Joe brought up sort of a, you know, oil, just as, as, you know, as an example. You don't do that with a standing ad hoc committee of citizens who don't necessarily have any expertise in any of this stuff. You know? Okay, we're having a problem with the oil seepage on, you know, Seahorse Lane. So let's pull up the Ops Committee that none of those guys necessarily know anything about that. If you've got some specific task like that, you want to create a new group that actually has specific knowledge about it.
You're right. We got lucky with Canal Drive because they happened to be, eight of nine were engineers and lived in the North End.
Right. Well, that was the whole point, is you were looking.
We were lucky in terms of the applications we got. That's who applied. And I don't disagree with you, though. I guess, uh, my thing to always say, if, if we vote, I think if we take that committee in isolation and make a determination, I'd say the off-ramp would be January or December, January at the, prior to the retreat to say, okay, the six months passed, another six months passed, no project, no anything. And we can, we, those on council, Mike and I won't be part of that, but, um, they can make the determination to sustain it in whatever capacity or not.
I think the off-ramp could be July. This morning. Well, look, we're, we're getting, but look, this is the last meeting before we're in the next fiscal year.
Yep.
Right? So look at it that way.
It's not emotional to me one way or the other, just because I'm a liaison.
Okay. So if I look at, I'm just trying to be the mediator maybe or whatever here. If I look at those and I ask myself, what am I asking that, as, as the council person, what am I asking each of those committees to do? Operations, I don't think I've, I personally am, and I mean, no one else up here is, haven't asked them to do anything. Uh, Police Advocacy, for the most part, for me, is the bike rodeo. I, I know you guys, and.
There are a few other things.
You do more things, but I, I'm not trying to put any of these committees down. But I clearly see if we're going to continue with that. But you could also say that Bike Ped could, you know, those two could merge if that's, if the bike rodeo is the big, the big thing. Bike Ped, I don't see, I mean, the main thing that I see there is Rodney's participation in the MPO Bike Ped Committee, which is fantastic. And, um.
Which he's done excellent job, by the way.
Yeah, better than, I, I didn't really even understand what we were missing until he started reporting on it, like, wow. Parks and Rec, we're not working on any sort of master plan.
That's done.
Right now. Um, and the issue, I mean, I think we all support beautification. The issue there is to do that, you need money. And then it's, it's such a long cycle to get money. So, I mean, you could sit here and make an argument for most of these to go away.
I kind of like the ad hoc idea.
That you leave this, but Mike has a good point, though. I think you have, you may have some of these committees like Bike Ped, for example, or Beautification. Those are not specifically skilled areas and a general citizen-appointed committee makes sense. When you get into, like, I know Mike's going to probably bring, plan on bringing up the Freeman Park thing, a general consent, citizen, like, I wouldn't be of no use to you on the Freeman Park. I mean, I could as a council liaison, but as a citizen, so I don't have any expertise in that.
Right, right.
Right? I, I, I'm not really the person you would, you would want. So I think there may be different type, different flavors of committees. Ones that require technical expertise and ones that are just general citizen feedback.
I mean, we, we're, you know, again, with, when I think of ad hoc, I think of it has a specific goal. And when the goal is attained, it's a, it's not a committee anymore. So we, we always have, we have the authority, you know, like Jay's saying, like, Parks right now is in a little bit of a dip, right? They've just recently completed their master plan. Uh, they're not reviewing, like, you know, I remember, I went to some of those meetings and the, the committee was reviewing the playground equipment and the vendors. If it's got a dip, I mean, it's certainly just on the authority of the council liaison to say, we'll just suspend operations for a while. We'll go to every other month or we go to quarterly, just like marketing does quarterly. So I, I don't know that you really need to put the ad hoc label on them because when, when I see that ad hoc label, that's saying to me, that's going to end.
Oh, I don't think we care whether, does anybody care whether it's ad hoc or standing?
Labels, anyway, what the.
I don't, I don't think that was the push today.
Not to, not to call them ad hocks. As I say, you just leave them as standing committees. But, you know, you have the authority, Deb, to say, hey, we're just going to slow down. We're, we're in a type of, a time of year where there's not a lot cooking.
Do we care about that term? Was there some reason? I don't remember how we got on that, this calling them ad hoc or.
I, I think it was just a principle like y'all were talking about is ad hoc has a.
Specific end and beginning, and they have a mission.
They have a specific mission. That's where we struggled is, is the standing ones. After that speci, after that bike rodeo was over, they met the following months. And not to pick on by, uh, Police Advocacy, but that was the example we're using. And maybe some of those discussions, um, went this way and council's going this way.
Yeah. And that's because in the ones I've been in, we are extremely fortunate because we have a highly active community and participate, remember, it hadn't always been that way. And, uh.
There was a time when I served on three committees because we couldn't get anybody to be on the committees.
Right. But now it's not just that you have passion, you have, um, very experienced people and knowledgeable people as well. And I think where we get into trouble is when you put passionate, knowledgeable people in a room with no direction, they create a direction. They do. That's what I would do if I was in there. And that, then sometimes it's a good direction, sometimes it's not. But that's the thing we're trying to fix, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that make sure we're giving them the direction. Now, that doesn't mean that they don't get together and say, hey, Deb, we want to work on this. We think it's going to be a great idea. Doesn't have to start with Deb. Doesn't have to be Deb's idea. It's just Deb has to bring it to council and say, this is what we want to work on. You guys agree.
So look, if we, if we sunsetted Ops, now we're bound to that rule of thumb of four. Every council member could have a committee that they, you know, a standing committee that they're over. And, you know, and then ad hocks come and go. And Joe?
Let's make, let's motion on O H C. I think I've said enough.
All right.
I said, I mean, it's, yeah, so.
Before we do the one at a time, can we, can we just go down the, I just want to, before I vote on any particular one, I want to know what the whole looks like. So Deb, what cha, I don't want to put you on the spot. That wasn't fair.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. That's okay.
What would you, i- if we're going to sit here and make motions of changes, what are your changes? What do you want to say?
So for, for Police Advocacy, I'll just say it's exactly what you said. We're basically the volunteer, we're the citizen volunteers for the police department. So when chief has something coming up that he needs volunteers for, he's going to reach out to us and say, hey, we need you guys. So that's basically what we have turned into because we don't set policy. We're not there to set policy. So with the police, there's nothing other for us to be than basically a citizen liaison between this, the public and the police department. So, and that comes through volunteerism. So, um, I think ad hoc or however you want to put it, we only meet for certain, certain things is perfectly fine. I know that the folks who are on PAC do not want to disband.
Right.
Because they like feeling, that feeling of being a part of helping the police department.
Yeah, they support, that's why.
Because everybody on there supports our police department. So.
So would you make any changes to this list? And I'm just going, would you combine things, get rid of things for the others? Do you have any?
Well, I think if Ops.
If you don't, it's fine. I'm going to.
Well, I think if, I think if Ops goes away, then you have four committees here. There's four council people. Each one's assigned a committee and that's how we, that's how we do it.
Jay, what's your thought?
Yeah, I would sunset Ops. I would, uh, ad hoc Parks and Recs. I mean, the, the big issues with Parks and Recs is the master plan, which happens once every five years. We just got through that process. And, I mean, when the conversation was around with, with the Matsui Land, that was a great conversation. But that, that's gone away also. So every month we do talk, it's nice to get together, I'll be honest with you. And these cit, these citizens are passionate about what they believe in. But we do talk about the exact same things in every single meeting. You know, there's really, there's no, it's no fault, it's just the nature of the beast. There's no direction in where we'll go.
And that frustrates people at times, I'm sure.
I'm sure. Yeah. Plus attendance, attendance lately has been terrible.
Well, and that's probably why, because they're like, well, I'm not doing.
What are we going to talk about?
So, you know, that's.
As I said, we're going to talk about X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
In July.
If there's a mission.
And then, Jay, you know, that's, and that's to your prerogative to say, we're going to meet every other month. Or, hey, Eric, I know you've got a lot on your plate. You don't have to come to every one of these things, you know? Um, and I often say, one of the things I like about committees is if I'm a citizen, well, I'm a citizen, but, you know, a Joe citizen who might like to see a Parks and Rec initiative, not, not everybody wants to stand at that podium. That's pretty daunting to a lot of people, but they feel comfortable coming to a committee meeting to talk about this sort of thing. I've seen that at Bike and Ped a lot. So for that reason, I would not, well, I've not been saying it, but we, we keep, you know, Parks and Rec should exist. And by the way, when I looked at all the beach towns up and down, more town, almost every town has, holds a Parks and Rec Committee. That's the one committee that almost every town, that was almost universal.
Joe, what, what are your thoughts? And again, we're going to, I think Joe wants to get to some motions here, which I'm totally fine. I just want to make sure everybody's ideas get out there before, and I hear from everybody, I want to hear from everybody. everybody, I want to hear from everybody before-
If there wasn't an ops advisory committee, I usually have a Q and A every month, which is far more time and research that goes into me getting ready for an ops and advisory committee, from which I come away maybe with another 12 or 15 RFI's levied on me. So there's the homework that Mike talks about, that we're familiar with. I don't think that there's been a discreet project given to them. It's not emotional, none of us should be emotionally tied to an advisory committee. We are very good at getting and soliciting input from the public without having to go to town hall at a set time and month. So, sunset. Police, Deb, you get, you're right, ad hoc, there's some, there are things that happen every year at a determined time. And then, really, bike ped, parks, beautification, nothing, if you get a better pulse on that, I think, Jay, you've been doing that long enough. I think, we need to just do something about some of this today. That's it.
Any last thoughts, Mike?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable that, I think that, well, I, you know, I do have a last thought, which is like, okay, so Joe, you're not going to have a committee. You poor-
Give him one of yours, Mike.
I, well, I, I've said, I am committed to not being on town council this time next year, there's going to have to be a transition, but that's still six months ago, so I'll imply that this is next month. But, you know, maybe, congratulations on bikes and ped there, Joe, but I'll keep coming. Just to give you, well, both of us are talking, neither of us are planning to be here the next time around.
No.
Right? Are you saying that officially into that microphone, Joe?
He did already. He did already.
But we're not, we're not resigning our seats either, so I'm not sure what massive change that, um-
I do like the idea of quarterly, a set quarterly meeting. Your first meeting is July every year, because that's the beginning of the fiscal year. And then you have a meeting-
That jumps Kim a little bit.
I'm more of a bi-monthly kind of guy, because quarterly's a long time in between.
Well, but then you can call meetings as-
Yeah, you can call them when you want them, right. Okay, well-
Kim's scrunching up her face. Give me, give me your feedback, Kim, because this falls on you.
Out of advocacy, I'm thinking we're getting back away from the ad hoc mission driven. If you're just saying, meet, just a meet, then you're not-
She's right.
It's okay, so July would be the, the one official meeting, and then other meetings would be called as needed.
So here's what I think I've heard.
But these are not ad hoc committees, really. That's, if we're, if ad hoc means one mission, and then you disband the committee, then these are not ad hoc committees.
I think they're still standing committees.
So we probably should stop using that term.
Yeah, I think by the definition, they are standing, if they're going to have regularly scheduled meetings, even if it's one a year, they are standing committees, correct? Ad hoc is, Mike is right, we started, we, we needed something between ad hoc and standing, and we, so we kind of adopted ad hoc, but that's not, so-
Auxiliary, I'm thinking specifically for PAC, they're, they're a group of volunteers that are given an assignment.
Yeah.
It's a, though, they're standing committees, they're just, they meet as, um-
As needed.
As, they meet as needed, or at the pleasure of the council liaison who runs the committee. So it's not really a change to any ordinances or anything like that. Now, sunsetting ops is changing an ordinance, or, it's not even the right word.
The one thing I really liked that Mike said is a rule of thumb of one committee per, two things I really like is, from what I've heard you guys say, is, as a rule of thumb, not a rule, but a rule of thumb, keeping it to four committees is good. I like that, I think that, that could live on, doesn't mean you have to have four, but that's when you know you're getting stretched out. And then the other thing is, staff doesn't attend unless invited by the liaison, by council, liaison will bring it to council, say, I need so and so to come give a present, I need Jeremy to come give a presentation on whatever, or Brian to come tell us about something, whatever it might be, then that's when staff would attend. Right? Does that achieve-
Yeah, yes, sir, I mean, I would say, hey, we would like a, Mr. Manager, we would like you to-
Yeah.
Have, prepare somebody from the staff.
Exactly. We wouldn't ask for a person, we'd ask Bruce.
We'd ask Bruce.
That would be preferable.
And he'll put the perfect, the right person on.
And, you know, and so this, and by the way, Ed, thank you, this is good, and this is our policy, but it's not an ordinance, okay? There's not, this is not backed by law, but it is a policy that, that we follow, so, you know, I think we should adopt this into this policy, right?
Sure.
Again, it's just not, it's not, just to be clear, it's not an ordinance, it's not-
But what that says, Mike, is when you, when you bring your Freeman Park committee, you're going to have to get rid of something, if we go to four.
No, that'd be ad hoc, though, so it's a different baby.
Ad hoc is different, totally ad hoc.
I got you, Deb, I got you.
That one will have a end date, well, not necessarily a date, but an end result, a mission to achieve, and then let it go.
You need a free park land by some date. All right, okay, I heard from everybody, I'm happy now. So, Joe, back to you, what were you going to propose?
I think we'll go through the list, be decisive. O A C can sunset.
Okay.
Police advisory, you stay, as stated-
Do we need to vote on these things? So you need to make a-
I make a motion to sunset the operations advisory committee.
Okay, motion, any other discussion on that? Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
July 1?
Yeah, it's the beginning of a fiscal year.
Now's the time to make a call like that.
Yep, okay. Police advocacy, what you want to do, Joe, write it down on the list?
Yeah, so, you've got that event, that the status that you recommend, Deb, is the liaison is standing?
Standing with one annual meeting in July.
Minimizing the, right, make a motion to-
Well, hang on, do we need a motion on that one, since we're not changing anything? If we're changing its schedule, I'm just trying to figure out where we-
Schedule you'll get from the, from the elected prep-
See how there's a motion that's needed.
They'll get direction from the council liaison.
I don't think we need a motion on the rest of them.
Okay.
So you don't need a motion.
All right, so, so just for clarity and understanding, so police advisory will move to a one standing meeting per year, which will be July, where they will elect their chair and vice chair.
That would be for all, that would be for the four remaining committees.
Right, for the four remaining committees. And any other meetings, the council liaison would bring to council, in the workshop, we're going to do it in workshops, not in council meetings, going to bring it to the workshop, any additional meetings, and any staff resources they need.
Right.
Is that good? For the other four, does anybody want to, there was discussions about combining any of these or getting rid of them, is that standing, or was anybody want to make?
Can I ask a question? As a chairman of one of the committees?
I say yes.
Let her ask.
Yes.
We have ongoing-
Good morning. We, beautification, as Chair of beautification, we have ongoing things that we do. I don't know how this is going to affect our programs, particularly one is our beach access program, which we deal with Jeremy various times throughout the year. We have projects that we have to kind of call each other together to go look after and work through, because we, like you said, one meeting or two ago, we put shovels in the ground and do things, not only make recommendations to you guys. So I'm a little perplexed as, I'll be chairman until July, then they elect a new chairman.
They could reelect you, though.
They, they probably, anyway.
Yeah, except for that one.
So, those people-
Are you stepping up, because I think it's already accepted, right?
Those people who are chairpeople of these committees that you're talking about are going to need some direction on how to move forward with what they're doing.
So I think, Cindy, what you're, when you have your July meeting-
Yes.
Is when you set your schedule for the year? So you will still have, beautification is, so they still have their monthly meeting just as always? And submit that to Kim?
What I'm hearing is, they would-
Council, but the-
And, and to take, I mean, I understand, Mike does a lot, I understand that, and it may be different in first of next year after elections, but, I mean, it's a committee that it kind of is ongoing, so it, we're just going to need a little direction, and-
Well, the point-
I think that's what we're trying to do, Cindy, is, is, so who's the lead, are you beautification?
Yeah.
Okay, so what would happen there is in your July meeting, you guys would meet-
Yep.
And you would say, okay, I'm making this up, so it may not make sense, but just as an example, so you guys may say, look, we don't really actually need to sit down and have a meeting, but every other month, I'm making this up. And we don't really, you know, maybe we need, and, and we're going to do these projects over the next, you know, for the fall, these are the things we had planned for the fall. So then Mike would come to the next workshop and say, okay, beautification's met, they're going to have meetings in, you know, August and November, making it up. And then, and they don't need any staff resource, so they do need staff resource for those meetings, whatever, and then he would communicate that to Kim. So whatever, I guess we're-
It's not really a change.
It's not really a change, we're just, we're buttoning up to make sure that council, council ultimately is given the direction. May start with you guys, hey, we think we need to do this, but then it comes to council, council then approves, and then gives, sets the meeting schedule and gives it to Kim so she can advertise it.
Right, so in July, when we meet, we could say, yeah, we're, we're going to stay with every third, when, every first Wednesday, throughout the year, and that's what we're going to do.
Yep.
And Deb could meet with your group, and y'all can work it out amongst yourselves, how often you're going to meet.
Yeah.
So there's not really any, there don't, shouldn't, nothing should look any different to you.
It, it probably sounds different, and that's, that's the issue, because our group gets together probably once a week, if not more than that, or less than that, because we have, we just did-
Projects, ongoing projects.
We just did the American Legion's-
That's to do project work, though, you don't have meetings, do you?
No, no, we just have to communicate.
Because if you have a meeting, that needs to go to Kim and needs to be announced.
Well, we communicate some to pull our workforce together.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think this affects-
It's not going to affect your meetings and stuff.
I'll make sure.
Yeah.
Good question, good question. All right, where are we?
Well, we-
We got rid of O A C, we're down to four.
Really? Yeah, whoa, sorry, I'm-
Do we want to combine any? I'm not pushing that, I just know you all brought it up.
I think we leave the four the way they are for right now and see how, see how it goes.
We go with the new structure.
Make that determination in January.
Yeah, that sounds like-
I agree, but what, we should update the pol, you know, I know Kim's over there furiously writing down everything we're saying, so we could update, update this to reflect this, this new-
So, Ed, did we accomplish-
Policy.
What we, is it clear?
I just want to make, I heard one point when Cindy was up here, and I'll use a different example, because I went to bike ped earlier this month, is, so bike ped would, based on what I'm hearing, they would meet in July, appoint their chairman, vice chairman, whatever positions they have. And then, if they have a project, then they would have their liaison, which is Mike or Joe, I'm not sure, but, um, council member Hofer. And they did have a project they were interested in, and I think we're going to try to get a resolution together, so they wanted to go after a designation for the community. So they would come back to council and say, hey, we, we're interested, and council member Hofer said, here's, here's a resolution, they're interested in coming back and working on this for X number of meetings, and we'll get with the clerk the schedule. The only thing I didn't hear with Cindy, and I just want to make sure, is, oh, yeah, they're going to meet their regular schedule, but the council liaison for beautification still needs to say, and here's what we're going to be working on.
Yes, yes.
Yes. So in their July meeting, their liaison would come back with, we're going to meet the next three months, or the, every month this year, whatever, and here's what we're working, going to be working on.
Right.
And then council would then either give feedback, or consensus agree on that schedule, you know, whatever the-
You may, you may want to say, oh, yeah, that's great, but we want you to add this in there too, or, you know, or, we don't want you working on this piece, but-
And like your bike ped example, let's say that was something, since it's going to be, there's a, there's a resolution that they're working on, then Mike may say, and hey, manager, we need, just to make sure that we come up with some resolution that's legal, we may need some experience or help from staff in these next three meetings to help us formulate that.
Perfect.
Does that sound good?
That is perfect.
Okay, so, maybe we flip the, what's not going to happen is there not going to be meetings without consensus from council on what they're working on, other than January, July, which is the stand, which will be a meeting every year, required for every committee. And these will remain standing committees, that's where I think they are.
Standing committees, so?
Yep, these four.
All right.
And then, and then I think, was it Joe or Mike, I can't remember who said it, is if, if you get to the, you know, let's say hypothetically, this is funny, I'll use beautification example, because it won't happen with that group, but let's say beautification, well, they, we go to our, our offsite in January, February, whenever it is, and our strategic planning meeting, we go, well, beautification hasn't met since July, maybe we don't need beautification.
You get to January, you make that determination.
Right. But if we look back and they say, well, look at all the projects they've been working on, they're doing good stuff, and, yeah, they stay. Does that work? That kind of the annual, so we'll have an annual review in January of standing committees to see if they're, but, that, that sounds like a, a move in the right direction to me, so I'm-
Because the talent on the O A C is better served in a place like NFMA and the advocacy works, project partner with the town, for instance, and the grant that may come through, awarded, they've already been designated prior to as the, sort of the citizen side by side, as Ed knows and Jeremy knows. So there's places to provide subject matter expertise and input and assistance moving forward.
All right, Kim, or Ed, whoever, based on what we've said, is there any other, I mean, it sounds like you have consensus on that, but do you need a motion, is anything changing that requires a motion in what we just said? Any policy change, or legislative change?
I'm thinking you update the policy a bit with the discussion we had, and then at another meeting, say, hey, we would like to-
We can bring that back.
To adopt the policy.
It would be good to capture some of this, especially with going into an election where at least two people, sounds like, won't be back, if we can capture the intent of what we were trying to do today, you know, like, for example, committees don't meet unless it's been presented to council and, and agreed to, and staff doesn't participate unless asked to, right?
Perfect.
Resources are requested. I think that could be added.
So, I'm going to-
Are you going to throw a wrench in the system?
I am going to throw a wrench in the system, but, but, so we had a, we had a Parks and Recs meeting two months ago, and we had some members from Bike and Ped there. And the reason I bring this up, it was probably one of the best meetings we had, it was vibrant, we had good discussion, it was, and the only reason I bring this up is, I think in the future, I think it would be great if we had meetings where we had two committees together, because what you find out when you have a lot more people in the room, the discussion is, it's real, and it was very, very healthy, and I'm just throwing that out there, has nothing to do with what we're deciding on today, I'm just saying, I think I would love to see meetings in the future where we have committees together.
Well, that, that's on us to coordinate that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't need to be really, you know, that's not a, a specific policy, that's, that's just leadership from up here, you know, what we should be doing.
I agree. All right, anything else we need to discuss, Ed? Sounds like we got to-
Go ahead.
All right. Next up is council comments, gosh, you guys have been talking the whole time, so.
All right, let me go first.
All right.
Since we're on committees, now that we've hopefully clarified our committee, our standing committees and such, let's start an ad hoc committee. Freeman Park, look, we discussed this at, at the budget retreat, I believe we had a 100% consensus that there should be a, a land management plan up there, how to manage our 300 acres of pristine upland, you know, talking west of the dunes here, right? Not talking about the sand and the hatteras ramps and toilets and stuff like that, but how.
Where we went out and wandered.
Yeah, how do we manage this three hundred acre, what's the proper, best way to manage three hundred acres of, you know, look, it is upland, um, of parkland is what we have here, we have a, 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 a natural area that we want to manage. We, um, a- and, you know, I think that a, a management plan that's agreed upon is, while it's still not authoritative as a, um, ordinance, it's what, ordinances could be changed anyway, but it gives us, uh, a basis to move forward. So for instance, um, at one point, and I can't recall when we voted on it, but it came to council about accepting dredge spoils out there, and we all agreed, no, we don't want this, we, we don't want waily, yucky dredge spoils from a marina getting dumped on this natural area, and we all, that, that went to a vote, I think, or at least it was a consensus that we all agreed on that, but it's not, it's not written in as a, as a policy, it's not officially documented as part of a management plan, we're not going to do this, I'd like to see, as one example, this be done. So, um, but this is not a new conversation, I just think it's time to start this process, let's get going. We, we discussed how, how a committee would look in the budget retreat, and again, there was, there was no disagreement, I don't, don't recall on any of this.
There was, there, it wasn't just a specific skills, experience, education, a cross-section of government from various levels, business, couple of citizens at large, I believe, two maybe, and it was a nine or so person with a liaison.
Right, and I'm, I personally, I think that, um, Eric Jalinski or his designee in the Parks Department should serve as the board chair.
Ed, was there anything?
Committee chair.
I think, I think, you know, Mike, I, I do know we had a lot of discussion about this, and I think Mike's represented that properly, that we kinda agreed need to do something, but there was an issue, there wasn't an issue, but we were kinda waiting on, um, direction or guidance from Noel based on the agreements that we entered into. Are we, is, is the timing for this good now, from your view?
We, uh, we did have those discussions, um, like councilmember Hoffer said, and councilmember Vincent kinda hit the nail on the head, um, I, I went back when you brought it up earlier and looked at the notes, so we have met with Noel, and we met with our representatives from Land and Water, um, that would want us to form this committee to create a land plan for Freeman Park, and they had criteria they wanted us to meet, it doesn't have to be this designated exactly, but it was basically what, um, what Joe said, it was a nine-member committee, two would be citizens at large that would have a expertise in coastal issues, um, a staff member, a council member, uh, somebody from Division of Coastal Management, somebody from Coastal Federation, a coastal ecologist, a biologist, and somebody from National Heritage Program.
We need, we need.
I'm sure there's some flexibility in there, but that's what Land and Water wanted to see, who has the deed restrictions on the property, it's just we would have to find those people.
They want, they, they're saying they want those, that specific, uh, organization of a committee?
Yes, sir.
Like they're, they're that specific on what?
That, I'm sure there's some flexibility there, but those were the examples they gave us, they'd want that type of representation.
But we were also waiting on the funds to get here, which finally, finally got here, that was part of the holdup too.
That's right.
So it sounds like timing's right.
Yes, sir.
Mike's right. So, just so that you two sync up, I, I think Mike's wanting to do this today, and I have no problem doing this today, but it sounds like you need to get your list, you and Mike probably should come, or we can do it right now if you want, just get your list coordinated to make sure Land and Water's cool with the list of the type of people that's on it, and then, and then we could create the committee. Or can we do that now, or do you think you need to sync up and we'll do it, would us, we could actually put it on.
I, yeah, I don't know who these people are gonna be, but, um, we would, we would just need to identify who we think they were gonna be, if you want Mike now.
Yeah, I don't mean the actual people, I mean the roles, the, the.
Oh, okay, right.
Participation, cause I don't know that Mike's in line with exactly what sounded similar to me.
Close, close.
Do we need to define that now? We'd need to find that to create the committee, right?
With the understanding that these people may not necessarily be citizens, you know, preferably citizens?
They may not be Carolina Beach citizens.
That, well, yeah, that's, you know, preferably, but if the expertise comes from elsewhere, so be it.
I, I think this, I'm, I'm actually on board completely with Mike, because this mirrors exactly what I've said since the beginning, since we purchased the property, this is what we need to do, it's about preserving and being the stewards of that land, so nothing out there happens that shouldn't happen out there, so.
Ed, do you mind letting them know, letting the, the fund, the LCWF know that this is what we're moving to do? And obviously, we can't select from these state agencies, they'll give a representative, and that'll be, you know, because it's, the list of what we were looking for specifically in terms of duties, functions, skills, was captured during the 2024 budget retreat, I believe. Kim's nodding, so that.
And that's not unusual, right? I mean, there are a lot of bodies that, I mean, I'm on things just because I happen to be the mayor, whoever sits in this seat is automatically on it, right? So it's not unusual that you reach out to an organization and say, by legislative action, a representative from this group is on this committee, and then they can point who they want.
So think about, uh, back when you started the North End, um, flooding ad hoc committee, how did that, that came from a, um, a vote at, at council that said, we intend to start this committee? You, you, you'll remember the process, I won't, I wasn't around for that.
Well, but it did specify the, I think this is dramatically different, cause this specifies certain representation and certain skills.
So should, should we ask for, uh, for your staff to put together a resolution that we'd look at at the next council meeting?
Yeah, I think you and Ed need to meet, I think, I like both of what, both of you are saying, I just don't know that those lists line up, I just want you guys to get together and line them up, and then bring something for us to vote on, here's the committee, this would be, cause you've gotta ensure that Land and Water likes that list.
Yes.
And then Mike had some ideas on there too, the only thing I would say that Mike's, we, we need to also make sure there are at least a position or two of just general.
There are, yeah.
Using public on, on there, I don't want it to be a bunch of, I mean, by definition, it's gonna have these experts from these various organizations that are gonna be needed, but there's a community piece to it, I just wanna make.
Well, exactly, because that property is historic, it was part of a segregated beach.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's history out there that we need to also make sure that we preserve.
Yep, and they need some representation.
Yeah, I'll help with that too, let me, let me.
So.
Mike, it sounds like everybody's in agreement that we go forward, if you guys can just get, if you can get with staff and bring something, the actual definition for us to vote on, cause it sounds like we're not gonna create it on the fly.
No, I wouldn't, yeah, but, so we could get something ready for a July, a regular July meeting, comfortable for you guys?
Yeah.
Sounds good, thanks for bringing it up, Mike.
You're welcome.
Alright, any other council comments from you, Mike?
Now, that's enough of one for me.
Joe?
Uh, just three fast, um, Pete, uh, the potential tropical cyclone eight project, the four hundred K of stormwater comprehensive flushing and draining and, uh, a few weeks ago, that was give or take a few weeks for the contractor, do you happen to know, Ed? I know that was, that's a Brian, um, oversight.
Uh, do you have, let's see what I got for flushing stormwater lines.
Cleaning out the basins, and then at the end, Paula told me that she was part of a, you know, at, once that's done, mapping out what we believe is underground in terms of stormwater infrastructure.
I know that the, um, the cammering was all gonna start early July.
Okay. They, and then they don't have to ha, not to have it now, but maybe if there's any way to know, they're moving from south to north, north to south, east, you know, like how they're gonna maneuver through town.
Okay, I do not know that, but I can find out for you.
That's, that's a gee whiz thing, Ocean Boulevard probably oughta be twenty-five, there's no shoulder, I'm watching people going down, it's naturally constricted when you're looking down at a road with no shoulders, um, recently paved, that's, so I know Mike mentioned it before, I think it's, makes good sense. And last, thank you, Ed, for jumping to task, lots of calls I took, the first of which came from Captain Dave Tilly, others followed, seems to me, you know, working with DOT standards on spill kits and so on, um, getting them right, but what we don't wanna have anyway, I think, is a single point of failure, just one fuel point, that may be decommissioned, may not get resupplied, and then our charter boat captains are stuck in their slips with nowhere to go. Colonial, Colonial Oil had, had a concept, this is going back three years, three thousand gallon tank diesel, put it on a, you know, graded, crush and grind, and retractable hose, um, obviously, Alan would have some feedback on that, I'm sure, but I'll bring that back up in something a little bit more cogent.
Yeah.
With staff and to throw you, what my recollection was, cause I put a concept of operations together on that, and again, it just comes down to, if there's, just, just at the yacht club where they were to get fuel, obviously that's not a good outcome, um, no single point of failure, I think, that's, that's how I see it, anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Jay?
I am good.
Yep?
I'm getting some complaints about people actually blocking the sidewalk on Ocean now that we have a sidewalk, parking, actually parking across.
Okay, we, we have, uh, I have received a few of those, so we've had, um, police department has been going out and educating those folks that are a part there, so they've, they've made that a part of their patrol, so.
Um, the other thing is, um, I do have a couple boardwalk business owners who will be bringing a presentation to July council about social district on the boardwalk, um, so that'll be on the July, been working with Jenny and Roger Monk on that. The other thing is, could we just put together a cost analysis of actually milling down and paving canal, just for edification?
Hey, when we have a representative miller this weekend?
When I have, yeah, when we have a captive, when we have a captive representative miller this weekend?
On a boat in the south.
You wanna just paving, uh, uh, milling and paving a street without doing the improvements on, yeah.
Yeah, just without, without improvements, just.
We'll have three street ends done by then.
Yeah.
Scotch bonnet, clam shell.
Yeah, everyone wants to, everyone wants to make that one a bait, it's not about paving, actually, it's not a paving project, to be honest with you, but.
Yeah, that would, we wouldn't recommend that, but I get your point.
I think she's just asking for, can we just have that number?
Can we just have that number, please?
So at least we can speak intelligently, but.
And, um, Rainbow Bridge is coming together awesomely, uh, thanks staff for putting up the signs last week for me, um, we, Beth Bernstein and I'll be starting with the, putting down the plaques, um, hopefully next week, that'll be the memorial plaques, so that's where we are.
Alright, uh, I only had a couple of things, um, one was, um, we've all talked about it, but I'll bring it up formally here, uh, a lot of pushback from, out there, a lot of talking about goose manure all around the lake, and I don't know what to tell people, we, this staff and, and council put the best program together we could, and it was generally working, I'm not an expert in goose control, so I'm not trying to play one here, uh, but now the complaints are coming, and, uh, I think the message it needs to get out there is, you cannot power wash that enough, you would have to power wash it every day, right? I mean, people are like, well, why don't they clean it? Well, that's why we went with the procedure that we had, right? My understanding is that you could go out there right now and by dark, it would be covered again.
We, we literally, I, I think I gave one of y'all this example, we really, literally, uh, power washed it on a Friday evening and Saturday morning for the, when the farmer's market, um, we were yelled at by a lot of people because we didn't clean the walkway.
And cleaning's not getting to the root cause of the problem.
Right, so Ed, we also talked about originally that the gra, that we were gonna allow the grass along the edge of the lake to grow, which would actually deter geese from going into the, to, from being there, because they have no way of seeing their predators, so it's a natural deterrent, but I've noticed the, that the landscapers are still continuing to cut the grass all the way down, ne, right up next to the water.
Is that something we're supposed to be doing or not?
That's what I'm going through my head, I don't, um, I've heard that before, let me, let me go back and check on that, see if that's, um, something we do or don't wanna do.
When we had that lake meeting that day, we all, myself and Eric and Brian Stanberry, I don't think you were a part of that conversation, but it was quite clear that that was gonna be the policy going forward, was not to mow along the edge, and you can't kinda accidentally mow along the edge, you have to do it.
You have to do it with a weed eater.
With a weed eater, yeah.
So Ed, I would say the piece of that is we need to verify that that's actually, by people who know deemed effective, does that actually work?
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, I'm hearing from these guys that it does, but I don't know where the real source of the, that, and if it does, then I'd say stop mowing there.
Well, as, as my memory serves, when we were first doing the dredge, that was part of the project, and that was what we were presented, that they would not be cutting down the grass next to the lake, that they would allow it to go.
And when, when it wasn't being cut, I, I went out there with a fairly knowledgeable environmentalist who pointed out a lot of native plants that were growing up, it wasn't just grass, it's like, you know.
So Goose, Goose Masters asked us to have a educational program or process, have, have we looked into that on how we're gonna educate?
They want, uh, if, if they're gonna, if we're going to consider them future in the future, and they said they, they want a cooling off period, but if.
If somebody out there with them, sounds like, it's the town staff.
They, they wanna make sure that council and, um, you know, us as a, um, staff and council are all helping educate and behind them, and they didn't feel like they had that, and they were just getting harassed constantly.
Alright, I'd also point out that this is a.
You know, I'm no expert.
If they don't, Peter doesn't approve.
Yeah, he's gonna take Ed's spot.
You need a new commander.
I saw Bruce in Costco the other day, and his wife was doing all the heavy lifting.
That's not unusual.
Why's that new, that's not new?
Alright, sounds like this meeting is devolving, so with that, uh, this meeting is adjourned, thanks.